We have your attention, please. Good evening and welcome to this Acton School Committee meeting of March 10th, 2022. Our first meeting after the mask glib. Yay! Let's all stand and salute the flag. It's right over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any adjustments to our agenda tonight, Mr. Ross?
We do not. We're all set.
Well, I'd like to just say something about the agenda itself. Because we do have a policy. It's called Agenda Format. And that's why I don't like not having the Superintendent and Questions for Administrators listed under Consent Agenda. But if you look at B E D B dash R, and I looked it up and it came out very small and hardly seeable. But sure enough, it's there, you know. And I understood, somebody said that the progress monitoring, we don't have time during these longer budget meetings. But it still should be the agenda that we have as a policy. It should still be listed as it's listed in our policy manual.
You're suggesting that we have put progress monitoring on there, then dash none? Something like that?
Right, right. Or when we get to it, we just say, no monitoring this month.
And the Superintendent Principal Report is part of the Consent Agenda as Part III.
Right, but then on number five, we had listed Chair Reports and or Superintendent. And then 5.1 was any questions for the administrators present.
Yeah.
And we had that, and then all of a sudden it was gone.
I'll ask for those anyway, you know, but yeah.
There has been a shift on the format, a lot of the... I'm not sure when it happened, but my guess is Lisa took over some of this and in best practice was tightening some things up. And it was doing, she does a lot for us, everything around the agendas and getting all the information together. So my guess is that's probably when the change happened, so we can go back and revisit that with her.
I know, but either, you know, we could...
It's not a blame game, I'm just saying there was a transition from Kim to her. So that's probably most likely when it changed, is my guess.
What I'm saying is either we could vote to change our policy, or we just keep that policy.
So maybe review the policy and just see how it lines up.
So actually, actually, your adjustment to the agenda is to adjust the agenda, right?
Yeah, there you go.
I just like to have that section that says, "Questions for Administrators."
Okay.
That's really what's been missing, the last time and this time.
I'd recommend we just follow the policy, then do adjusted for something that just got morphed. I don't think anything here was, you know, purposeful.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, so I would say, yeah.
No, I think it just got eliminated.
On the minutes layout, it does have 5, 5.1, any questions? It is like that, on my layout.
So we'll just use that template, okay?
All righty then. Any comments from the public tonight? I see we have some people from the public tonight, would anybody like to comment?
Yeah.
It comes early.
Yeah, it comes early, that way you get to go more early.
All right, so I'm talking about the middle school grading that, um, you guys heard the topic about in a little bit. So I just want to say my thoughts on that. We're supposed to prepare middle school students for the next steps. The grading for middle school should be the same as the high school grading that they're going into. I feel like the school was very concerned about eighth grade going to school every day when others were hybrid during COVID because they need to prepare for high school. So they were the ones, them and kindergarten, the only ones going every day because they need to prepare them for high school. But we're not preparing them by not having them have the same grading system as what they're going into. I feel like the school board needs to talk to middle school teachers to get their feedback and feedback that, um, from parents that the teachers have heard about the grading. And going back to percentages, I bet would be a majority of what people would want or parents would want for their children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, I would second that, I agree. I think a lot of parents would like to see that grading change over for their middle school students to prepare them for, um, for high school. And definitely have heard some chatter from parents about not quite understanding the grading system as well. So helps them to get a clearer picture. Maybe not so much in elementary school because, um, you know, I don't think that... I think that that can be a lot of pressure for elementary school students to have the, you know, the percentages. But as they're getting a little bit older, um, it helps to make that transition a little bit easier, I think, into high school.
Under New Business, item 6.3, you'll be addressing that this afternoon?
Yeah, we will be.
Okay.
We'll be talking about that when we get down there. Anybody else, any other public comment?
I had a couple people I asked to come to public comment because we're wrapping up. We wrapped up negotiations and tonight, under New Business, you'll be voting on a couple of collective bargaining agreements. So a couple negotiated from each of the two teams is here tonight. And I do want to say on behalf of the Teachers Association and Support Staff and the School Committee, I sat in the middle. So I thought it went very, very well on all parties' parts. And maybe I'll just look to chat with the teachers for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm here representing the Teachers Union. And first of all, Amanda, Mary, thank you very much. It was my first negotiations, it was a lot of fun. I don't think those two words go into that. There's such a negative connotation with negotiations. But I think we both walked in, both parties, we were looking for a fair and equal contract. We were looking to recruit, retain teachers. I think that those goals have been met. When we went back to the union, we got 100% agreement from everybody. So I'm thinking for the next three years at least, we're going to see some really great teachers moving in here to Acton and staying in Acton. So it'll ultimately affect the children in a very positive way. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Nice work. And Judy, you were part of the Support Staff negotiations, which, like in record time, got the attention we need to be.
Yeah, and it was fun, wasn't it? Yeah, very quick. But thank you for Chad, everything he said is pretty much what we would say. But yeah, everything went well and we appreciate everything that came, you know, the outcome.
Very good.
Thank you.
We're glad it's over. For the three years.
Thank you for being here. Later in the evening, the School Committee will be voting on those CBAs. And then tomorrow, the next day, we'll get, you know, tomorrow we'll get signatures once it's approved tonight, okay? Awesome, thanks guys. Thank you.
And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, the process for negotiations in the last couple of years has changed. And maybe, maybe Mary and Amanda can explain what that is. We used to have, the teachers used to have a representative from the MTA that would come in. And we would have to have a representative from...
A lawyer.
A lawyer from Drummond and Woodsons. And it was always very cumbersome because, you know, this one is giving this advice. And what we really wanted was for our committee and our staff to come together and make an agreement on what was fair all the way around. So what do they call this?
Interest-based bargaining.
Interest-based bargaining. And we've done that for the last two years now, two contracts. Two contracts. And I'm glad to hear that it went so well.
Well, it's, you know, it's nice not having the outside people who don't know us, see? So we know our school and we know the people. And the other thing was scheduling, to try to schedule with a lawyer or their representative, the teacher's representative. It was a nightmare. So it was very good.
Well, thank you very much to you, to negotiate us on behalf of our board. And thank you to the two unions for your work on your side. Thanks for your attention. All right, let's go on to, we're all set with that. Let's go on to number three, which is Celebration of Learning, the new mask optional procedures.
Yes, thank you. So a week ago, tonight, we had a special meeting with the School Committee with one agenda item to look to making the universal masking policy that was set in August, late August, while in the presence of students, to make that masking optional for students and staff, starting Monday the 7th. I let that, that information went out over the weekend and kids showed up on Monday and were surprised and happy. And were feeling like they were doing something wrong when they were in the school for a little while. I saw a lot of this and it seemed awkward, but it was a happy awkward. And I think today, not so much, after three days of it. But we started on the 7th. I think almost any school district that I know of is there as of yesterday, the 9th. We were a couple of days ahead of when most schools put this in place. So I just wanted to update you that transition was very much happily embraced and it went well.
I heard that some of the staff were feeling guilty too about coming into the building without a mask on.
Get used to it.
Yeah. And it, as I was thinking about this, kids that are only in their second year of school have never been to school without a mask. So it's great to be able to shed those and move on and keep up with our protocols that we've established throughout the pandemic. All right then, I will look for a motion to accept the Consent Agenda, please.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette. Any discussion?
Just to discuss when we have report out on executive session, update on executive session. We had nothing to vote on when we came out, but what we went into executive session for was to discuss negotiations of the two contracts.
Ready for the vote? All in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda? I have it all. And does anyone have any questions about any administrative reports? I was going to ask Lori, but she's not here.
Yeah, Lori's got, has a couple of days off.
Yeah. I was very impressed as I was reading Lori's report with the project of having the eighth grade girls, uh, eighth grade kids, students, yes, students, make some, uh, do some games on kindness and go down into the lower grades with them and kind of be role models at the same time. And that it seemed like, it sounded like from her report that the older students enjoyed it and the younger ones did as well. I thought that was a great, I thought that was a great idea. Anybody have any questions for any of the other administrators?
Well, I just wanted to know with the school calendar, I know that comes up in another month.
Yeah.
But what are we doing with early release days? Are we changing the way we do them? I was, I thought it would be in the Assistant Principals' Report, but I didn't...
Yeah, we really haven't addressed that really yet. I think next month, when we look at the calendar, we'll look, I'll start by putting them in. And if you want to have a discussion about changing that in any way, we can talk about the pros and cons of that. I definitely want Lori here because those ERDs are part of, pretty much, she recognizes all that time and sets the agenda for that. So I don't want to speak for her.
Yeah.
The one thing that Kim and I did talk about, because we know that originally it was a kind of temporary piece and then it would go away as people were professionally developed, so to speak. One could also look at it being ongoing. If we change it from all, or say half, we start backing off, it would just be a matter of for parents to understand which Wednesday is and which Wednesday isn't. So I think that's something you need to think about.
Yeah.
When it's every Wednesday, it's said that it's every Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard when, you know, you have like, oh, is this the Wednesday that my kids are getting off the bus? Or is this the Wednesday that I have to pick them up early from daycare or, you know?
That's how we started. We started with like, once a month or something.
Right.
And then it went to every day because all the other schools went every day. But if we're not using the time properly, I don't want to take the time away from students.
Right.
I hate that they leave early every Wednesday.
Right.
And they're not my kids, but I don't think it's right. I don't think, you know, I need, I feel they need the time, especially after this COVID. They need more time in school.
Just for parents, even if it's the first Monday, as long as it could be consistent, that would be, I think, better for most parents.
A good practice for April, when you look at the calendar, would be to have a report from Lori on how was the time being used? Because we had set agendas for every one of them. And you can review that.
She sets pretty aggressive agendas for those too.
They come out on Mondays before the Wednesday.
Yeah, I was wondering about Brightspace, I should know what it is, but...
It's our new learning management system, it's going to replace our current one.
Mastery Connect.
The report outs that parents get and that as a, as a way of managing students' learning for the teachers, it's a pretty comprehensive program. Our contract ended with Mastery Connect and the staff, got to be at it for over a year. I look at many different products, what with this one. We need something, so we're trying something new.
So I saw there was some training, ongoing training, that, into the pro release days. Any other questions, or comments for any of the administrative staff reports?
Nope.
All right then, let's move on to number five, which is Committee Reports. And we'll start with the Policy Committee. Policy, the Policy Committee is, yeah, you can, if you want, you've given us quite a few policies. They're all, they're not new policies, they're all just being reviewed and updated as...
But has anything changed? Nothing looked changed today.
Well, some of them were Superintendent and the word Principal wasn't there. But on the other papers we had, the word Principal was in green. But here, if you see, it's not in green, but next to Superintendent, Principal.
A couple of them actually had no updates at all.
At all, no.
They were just, we have to sign them again.
From the 17th, they just revised, you know, so.
Many of the policies, when Policy Committee reviews them, I wish that they don't. They'll have the Superintendent Principal position, what's, two separate positions where the policy was written. So it's just a matter of making that one position in policy. And that'll happen as you go through these. Yep, it'll take a while to catch up.
That's all it was, I mean, most of it, that's what it is. And then we had, remember the great big packet that came out with all the Ds in it and whatnot, all the stuff? Well, this is where they came from.
Yeah, because this is 2020.
So these are all just reviews. I'm not going to read all the numbers, the 513DB, DBDD, all those little...
It's the Ds in the policy now.
I will look for a motion to accept as updated and reviewed policies for fiscal management goals, priority objectives, annual budget, budget planning, dissemination of budget recommendations, disseminations of budget recommendations, budget hearings and reviews, budget adoption process, expenditures categories, and student activities fund.
So moved. I'll second.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Amanda.
CJ.
Oh, CJ, I wasn't looking. To accept those as updated and reviewed. Any further discussion on those? All in favor? So moved with five of all. All right, how about number 5.2, Long Range Planning? Do you have a meeting?
We didn't meet this time, we didn't meet.
Okay. And negotiations, update from meeting?
I guess we'll go over that on 6.1 and 6.2.
Okay. I think we've kind of had a little bit of an update with our representation here from the two rooms too. All right then, let's move on to number six, which is New Business, and we'll start with the Teacher Contract.
All right, so...
Do we have this?
Did you have the whole packet?
All right, no.
It's 26 pages.
No, okay.
Did you send it to them or no? The actual, you know, the staff, I mean, the teacher and the staff contracts? No, I just, okay.
No. We don't need that, I just didn't know if...
They already meant and discussed it, so they just don't have the artifact.
Okay, no problem.
So basically, so the teachers is first, yes. We wanted to recruit, which is getting tougher, believe it or not, and retain, which seems to work in this school. Works pretty good. So just a few changes, and that's probably why everything went very nice and smoothly. We did give an extra bereavement day for a non-relative. We substituted the annual, no, the attendance benefit for an annual retirement benefit. We did a sign-on bonus for new hires. We did a salary increase.
And our goal there was to be competitive with Sanford.
Right.
Kind of, you know, to make sure that we were all up to date.
Right. Which ended up being 5%, 4%, 4% over the three years. And we'll see that in the budget. I think you put the actual numbers in there, Kim?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one of the big things was to get rid of the liability that we've been holding on to for years and years. The teachers will be able to cash out, put it into a retirement fund, or do both, or whatever they want to do. But at the town level, it really helps to clean up the financial records. So that's the teachers. So any other questions you might have, or what we went through? The medical stays at 83%, that's what it is this year, and it'll stay the next three years. 90% for single, but 83% for all the other plans.
Yes. So does one of you on the negotiating committee want to make a motion on the contracts?
I can't find the one, it's got to be here, a lot of papers sticking out of it. I'll make a motion to accept the new contract from September 1st, 2022, to August 31st, 2025, for, uh, between the Acton School Committee and the Acton Education Association for the Professional Staff Bargaining Unit.
Seconded?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? So moved.
I got so many papers.
Okay, so we'll move on to Article 2712, which is Support Staff.
Is it anywhere at this point?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. There's two big packets here.
Is it in this packet?
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trying to be organized. So with the Support Staff, the changes included also getting rid of the attendance benefit. It really didn't work too well. So what we have is a retirement benefit that equals three workdays. So that's what they'll get yearly. Juneteenth was added for year-round and school year employees. However, it probably won't affect school year employees because we barely get to June 19th.
And it was, it was a federal holiday anyways, so it was going to be added. It wasn't part of, I mean, it was, but it wasn't.
Yeah, so we had to get that. And what we did for our first year to get our employees walking in the door at zero or one-year experience, depending on any of the Support Staff, um, levels, is to get them so they can make more than what they make at Dunkin' Donuts. So we had to eliminate, I see zero through 12, is that correct? Because I see the line, okay. So zero through 12 steps is their first, it's a big bump, but it's really just about $13 to get them to $16 or $17, depending on what column they're in. So we thought that was fair because of what's going on with trying to hire people. We need to make sure they are getting paid good. And it's what's happening all around. For the next two years, there's an increase of 35 cents and 35 cents on the bottom. And so everyone gets a 35 cent. And an ed tech who subs, even for a day, will get an extra $25 in pay because we got to get them up to what a sub would get, so, basically. Those are the changes. And again, we kept the insurance at 83% for three years. Anything else?
I don't think so, I think you got it all.
So we really didn't have to touch anything with the wording in both. It was one little thing, but it was really just to clean it up. But otherwise, we left the wording alone, so that was good. That always saves time. Oh, yes.
The liability.
There was a liability in the Support Staff as well.
Correct. Same as the teachers.
So where they could cash out the liability. So we'll have, we'll get rid of that at the town level, which is very good. And it's really beneficial for them because there was this money that sat at the town because of the way the wording was. And these people had their money, if they left and retired from here, they could get. But it didn't make any money. And if they hadn't to just leave, that money didn't follow them. So they lost all the savings that was in our liability account. So I think it's better for them to get out of that and be able to take it with them, their retirement.
And I think it's, I think probably one of the reasons that you didn't have all the language changes is because of working on it so much in years past.
We did it three contracts ago.
We figured out, took all the, all the things out of the language, got all the language stuff straightened out. So that made it much easier for that, for this negotiation. Okay, so do you want to make a motion, one of you?
You can make a motion.
Well, you got to make it, go ahead. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, let's see what it's called. The Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Acton School Committee and the Acton Education Support Staff Association, MEA/NEA, from July 1 of 2022 to June 30 of 2025.
And I'll second her motion.
Okay, moved by Mary, seconded by Amanda. Any further discussion on the contracts? All in favor? I don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys. For your work and thank you for your work too, from, on behalf of your coworkers. Appreciate it. All right, so now we're up to number 6.3, which is Middle School Grading.
Yeah, I can take it from here.
And I'll let you take that one.
So at last month's meeting, it was asked by Mr. James Kittredge. He came and talked a little bit about the transition to high school and grading at the high school is different. We heard a little bit about that again tonight. And some concerns for the kids that are in the middle school transitioning to, to high school. And we, we've talked since too, and we talked about maybe having a workshop in the future. You can address that at this time. But I did say I would get some information and I did. I just sent an email out to the local districts and asked, "How do you grade at your middle and your high schools?" And, and I received responses from, and I only asked once because people are so busy. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven schools got back to me. And I'll name them and I'll tell you what I have the data, and I have a copy, anybody wants a copy. And it's in the packets too, you have it, but I don't have it out for everybody. So the district, the middle school, the high school. So the district, Kittery answered. Kittery is a 1 through 4 middle school and a 1 through 4 high school. York answered, York is a 1 through 4 middle school, York is a 1 through 4 high school. Marshwood answered, there are 0 through 100 middle school and a 0 through 100 high school. Bitterford answered, there are 1 through 4 middle school and a 0 through 100 high school. Saco answered, there are 0 through 100 middle school and they don't have a high school. They're a lot like us, they sent them to Thornton and I didn't reach out to Thornton. Massabesic responded, there are 1 through 4 middle school and a 1 through 4 high school. And Sanford, of course, responded, there is 0 through 100 middle school and a 0 through 100 high school. It, it just happens to be that it's just about split, so it's just one way or the other. The only anomaly is Bitterford does a middle school 1 through 4 and a high school 0 to 100. That's the only place where there is a parity, I just thought that was interesting for information. But there, there's, you know, I know that there's some next steps you'd like to take. I'd like to listen and find out what it is you'd like to direct me to do in preparation for figuring out some of this. At this time, I haven't, I have yet to have shared this with our school committee because all I did was gather data. But after tonight, deciding on when you want to have your workshop and what you want to get out of that workshop, I'll share it with my weekly update with the staffs, you know, in particular the middle school. I haven't gone to the middle school and said, "We're talking about this" because all we're doing is talking about it. But at some point, I don't know, I think I heard somebody saying, "Talking with the middle school teachers." Maybe that was you, Liz, I don't know. That, I don't know that they're in on any of this, meaning I haven't brought it to them because I'm not ready to yet. I don't have anything.
I just meant that like, I'm sure they get tons of feedback at parent teacher conferences about the 14-page report card.
And that might be something we want to look at. Okay, got it, thank you, okay. So those items such as that are things we probably want to look at. So let's have a discussion about what you think, you know, you'd, where you'd like to move and when and how.
Well, we, we have set a date for, as, uh, April 28th.
Right.
For a school committee workshop. And the purpose of that is, is this, discussion, to discuss the grading systems. And I think it would be good to, um, to kind of survey the high school students as well. Our high school students that are already, already, have already made that transition from Acton into Sanford and see if, uh, see what their response is, if it was a difficult transition for them or if it was not a difficult transition. And then maybe also, yeah, include the middle school teachers to see what, see what their, how they feel about it and what, what their response is.
I don't know if they still have that Survey Monkey thing that we threw out there and you get responses. So I would, I would like to see, you know, parents, teachers, and maybe freshmen, sophomores.
Freshmen, sophomores, I think.
Something like that.
Juniors and seniors.
Yeah.
But then when they leave high school, they go back to the 1 to 4.
Well, no.
No.
No, in college, you get number grades. It does get computed into a G...
It does get computed into a GPA at the end.
The GPA, yeah.
But you get 0 to 100 in college.
I would think it would be much easier. I don't know what...rather than trying to make a comment about, you know, Johnny didn't wear his shoes right today. I mean, you should see some of the comments. Not from here, but I'm just saying, you know.
I think if we...I think we should start...I think the survey should really start with the students that have made the transition. I think they...
What would they know?
I think they would know whether or not it was an easy transition for them to go from 1 through 4 to 0 to 100.
Bright Space is going to be the new report card process, so we can see what...I know you said before that will do either type of grading system.
Yeah.
But it'd be interesting to see what that kind of report card would look like also.
Went back years ago when this whole 0, 1 through 0 through 4 was going to be law offer for proficiency-based high school departments. That's where the energy was. And then it just kind of fell apart. It was like, it's going to be the class of 2016, and then it was the class of 2017, and then it went away. So there was a ton of work to be done, and then the state law changed. I don't know that anybody stepped up and said, "Let's do this because it makes a lot of sense. Let's do this because it was state law." Now, what I will say, and I'll say this at the workshop, there's a huge difference between the pedagogy or how you teach a child and how a child learns and their grade reporting out.
Right.
So you're at a proficiency-based philosophy of teaching and learning, which means we'll take each student where they are. We're not going to assume they all have the skill set. We'll know what their skill sets are. We'll take them from that skill set to the next level, knowing that all kids are in different places. How we report that out on a 0 to 1, 0 to 4, 0 to 100 is kind of really what we're talking about now. I just want to make sure I got this right because I've got my to-do list going. So survey high school students to get responses to transitioning from a 1 through 4 to a 0 through 100. I heard sophomore, freshman and sophomore, which is probably good because juniors and seniors, it was three years ago, they've lived in this world for so long, they probably don't have an opinion. So freshmen and sophomores. My next question is, survey...you said survey middle school teachers. That's easy enough. But I also added, how about specialists? Because they're responsible for the same group of kids.
Of course.
Right?
Oh, specialists in this building.
Specialists in this building, not just the middle school, but if specialists have...they have 6, 7 and 8th grade. Okay. So...and the other one is you said survey parents, but I'm getting the gist, this is about middle school. So survey the middle school parents. I just want to make sure that I'm getting this right from you. Okay? All right.
And if there's any way you could get some data before this April 28th?
That's what I'm planning to do. That's why I'm doing a to-do list, so that you can make them an actionable workshop, not a gathering data workshop, and have parents here.
Jeanette wanted to know if we could change it from 5 to 3, correct?
Change what to what?
The time on that date, because we did the special.
On April 28th?
April 28th. Liz, rather than wait until 5 o'clock, and we did the other one at 3, unless it's going to disturb the public, can we do it at 3 o'clock on the 28th rather than 5 o'clock?
We can do it whenever you want, but some...I'll get you mine. Some of the public is sitting here that seem to have some interest in this, the 3 o'clock work.
Well, no, we can...it's no big deal. It's okay. I just wanted...
I know you're not speaking for the entire middle school community, but here, so I thought I'd add a little.
I think 5 would be better for...
Okay, that's all right. That's okay.
Okay. Because maybe we want parent input on this.
And my only concern with this is to make sure that in just change, if we do decide to make a change in the grading system for the middle school, that we don't make any changes in what we have going for PBL, for proficiency-based learning, because this is such a great process for the kids to be able to learn. It's great for the kids who are excelling in any area. They can...once they get it, they can move higher. And for the kids that are working harder to get it, they can take as much time as they need to get to where they need to reach those learning goals. So as long as that isn't going to...this won't affect that at all, correct?
That...you summed it up well. That's where I think the ship's heading on this. It's not about the PBL practices that you spent tons of time on, because meeting students where they are, not leaving them behind, seems to be the right thing to do. And if we have to differentiate to teach me a little bit different because I don't have the math yet, but I'm in 3rd grade, and I need to have math, that might be 2nd grade, I want to stay with the kids that are my age and have it differentiated for me as much as possible, and not either have to stay back because I'm lagging behind. And if I'm accelerated, I want to grab GT and some other things, or move up a grade. That's why we do our blocks, so that the cohort is doing English Language Arts, reading and writing all at the same time. So if I'm a rock star, I can move up a grade. But if I'm struggling, I can move down a grade, and it's within the cohort span. That's the model that you've developed this school on. How we report out on that learning is different. That's on a 0 to 100 or a 1 through 4. That's the report out. That's like the grading piece is really what I'm hearing is what's being asked. Right? And Bright Space was brought up. Mike's hand went up. I don't want to get into the weeds with Bright Space and go into a conversation that may not make a lot of sense to people that don't use things like Bright Space and use learning management systems. I can't tell you exactly what I can and can't do, but I can tell you that if you do only have a computer that can spit out a 1 through 4, there are transition rubrics that a 2 equals a 76.4 or whatever. And schools have been doing this for six years since the law changed. So for people that wanted to know what a 0 to 100 was, and my kid's getting a 3, where does that fall on the 0 to 100? So those transition pieces can happen, and they're happening in places, too. So I don't want the technology to keep us from doing anything. I think we need to...you don't think beyond that? And now I'll ask you what you want to say, Mike.
Do you have something?
Well, it was just a clarifying question on whether or not we are moving away from the proficiency-based learning. So we're just going to still grade to the standard, to the proficient. And your statement, again, not going to the weeds, but Bright Space has the capability of doing both, recording to the standard and calculating to 1 through 4 or 0 through 100.
There you go. He gave me the answer. I set him up. Perfect. Yeah, great. So I'm glad it does, because I wasn't sure it was that, that we were able to, if we could do it mechanically, because I was...yes. Great. Even better.
So this workshop on April 28th will be posted, and I think the posting of our meetings now is also going out on Blackboard, right?
It is. I could have done that in my update. Mary came up with a great idea last week, and I just sent one out to the parents that just said, "There's nothing real special about tonight, but I'm going to start sending out Blackboards with the agenda for each school committee meeting each month." And you'll get them on Tuesdays before the school board meeting, and you'll get them...you'll get them when the school board gets their packet. So you'll get it 72 hours before any workshop that's scheduled on any night. So parents will know.
Do parents come to workshops?
Yeah. Workshops are a little more free-flowing, too. It's more like Warren Finance at the table.
One thing is, we don't take any votes at workshops. That's the difference, yeah.
But out of a workshop can come a vote. And what I heard Judy said was, the main meeting could be pivotal, pivotal, because it's really our last real robust meeting before school starts. Our summer meetings don't have as much to do with teaching and learning as those spring meetings do.
So this will be a couple weeks before the main meeting?
So April 28th?
April 28th.
At 5.
Yeah.
Okay, I got my to-do list.
Any further discussion on this one, on 63?
Nope.
If not, then let's go to 64, and we will now transition into our budget meeting.
We're going to pause because we have to set up shop, and then we'll just go right through.
So we are now transitioning into the budget portion of the school committee meeting, and I will just read our six strive statements. For those of you here that were last week, they're in blue, and I just handed them out to the two that joined us this evening, that this is what we do during our FY '23 school budget meetings, is there's six things we'll strive to work together. As a community that values the education our children receive at AES, we will strive to be fully quote "present" at the meetings. By becoming familiar with materials and by being attentive, we will strive to invite and welcome the contributions of every member and listen to each other. We will strive to be involved to our individual level of comfort. Each of us is responsible for airing concerns during the meeting rather than carrying those concerns outside the meeting. We will strive to operate in a collegial, professional and friendly atmosphere, and will strive to be responsible for examining all points of view. And tonight, we are going to look at...we're going to go Article 5, Article 6, Article 7, Article 9, and Article 12. And I got one other piece of information to hand out before we do that, and I'm going to work with Dennis going around the table. It was brought to our attention that we should have a glossary of terms for some of our own educational language or the government's language with benefits, because in several of these places, it's boilerplate. It's contributions to this, that, or the other. And Kim explained it, so we can take a look at these as they come around. It'll help us understand what's in the budget.
We've got some new members tonight. Maybe we should be sure that we do...
You want to do it?
Yeah, maybe we need to do introductions again, because we've got some people here that weren't here before.
All right. It's a great idea.
All right, I'll start. We'll go around the table this way. How's that? I'm Judy Shane, Chairman of the School Committee.
Michael Coy, Tech Director.
Yeah, Bruce, School Committee.
Mary Stan, School Committee.
Amanda Cobb, School Committee.
CJ Gardner, School Committee.
Margarita Borwell, Warren and Finance.
Kim Oliver, Finance, Personal Director.
Leslie Gerland, Warren and Finance.
Phil Caruso, Warren and Finance.
Ray Lopez, Warren and Finance.
Joyce Bakshi, Warren and Finance.
Dennis Long, Warren and Finance.
I'm John Ross, and the Superintendent and Principal of the Acton School Department. That's a good idea. Thank you, Judy, for that. Just real quick, as you read these, is there any that jump up that you'd like to talk about, take a minute? I'm not going to read each one to you, but this will help us if you...for instance, PBIS, Positive Behavioral Supports and Interventions, the fifth one up from the bottom. That's just a...it's a cultural perspective on how to run a school. It's all about teaching kids what to do right, teaching them the expected behavior, because in adolescence, when they come to school, they don't know what the expected behavior is. They know what the expected behavior is at home, and it might be more stringent or less stringent than it is here at school. So just simple things like that when they're young, and that's a pretty big piece of what we do here, and it's made a huge change. But I wanted to throw that out there, because as itself, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Sports, even though it tells you what it is, really doesn't tell you what it is, I had to just describe it to you. So feel free to ask any questions.
I have a question, John. As you were talking about changing the grading system, 1 to 4, 1 to 100, is that put into that? Is this PBIS integrated into that?
Students are...
System.
There's grades for academics, and then there's a 1 through 4 scale for your citizenship, so to speak.
Okay.
So it is. It is...the teachers have an opportunity to...
Because all I can see is, it wouldn't matter to me, and I'm not saying this, but just as a general statement, if it was 1 to 4, 1 to 100, as long as Sister Mary Matha and Sister Mary Latasha, grade school and high school. Of course, back in the day, Moses had just walked by, and we had A, B, C, D, and the dreaded F. But we knew exactly what those numbers were.
Right.
But on the back of our report card, needs improvement, doesn't try hard enough, blah, 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 these kinds of things. And I think those are important to keep into it.
We do have those.
Because also, there's a line for say, under needs improvement, you might have one of the nice nuns, my...improving beautifully.
Sure.
And that gave a kid...
A lot more than maybe what a B in math is.
Well, no, well, see, I'd switch hats on you there.
You see, a B in math is more important than...
No, not at all. But if my child got a B in math, and a B was, say, an 82, an 89, for one point more, you could have had an A. And when they're sitting there doing their homework, "I want to go, I want it, I'm done, I'm..." No, you're not. I want that 10 more minutes. I always would...you know the difference between a B and an A? Come on.
I'm glad you weren't my mother.
You know, I mean, I really, I did use them as a tool.
The piece you're talking about on the back of the report card?
Yeah.
We call them work habits.
Yeah.
And our work habits come out of the world of PBIS, and they're measured. So, you know, how somebody interacts with their peers?
Yeah.
For instance, that's a work habit. Being able to strive through and work through kindness, work through a problem.
So that stuff on the back of a report card is still reported out with this?
It is.
The teachers will write paragraphs at the bottom.
They'll give you a narrative.
So for, you know, reading, they'll get a circle, and it's 1, 2, 3, 4, and the circle is, you know, goes around to whatever number it is, and the number is there, and then it will break down the different parts of the, you know, can read to grade level, can read whatever, can read all these different parts to reading. And then the teacher can write a paragraph, saying, "Your child has improved this trimester from this level to this level, and this can work on this, and is doing well here." So they can do a whole big paragraph.
That's so important.
Would they send a note home beforehand saying, "Your child is not up to..."
Well, my children are perfect, so I don't...
Oh, you don't give them notes? Oh, I see.
Those never made them home.
No, but I mean, if they were writing into a problem, I think the teacher would call them.
I'm sure. Yeah, I think the way the system is set up, that if a child is struggling, the teacher's already on it, already working with them.
Right, so they wouldn't need as many words.
Okay. So the format is we work, as you look at the budget, proposed budget sheet, you'll see a...it says secondary object, but that is, I like to call it a cost center. So that's a cost center. For instance, on this one, it's the first one under Article 5, other instruction is stipends paid. You'll see the actual from two years ago, you'll see, or I'll say, the actual from last year, you'll see the budget from last year, you'll see this year's proposed, then you'll see the difference. And then the last thing is a percentage increase, up or down. And as I mentioned last time, when we hit, and there aren't a lot of them on this, but as we go through these articles, a lot of the employee benefits of boilerplate, and there'll be five or six lines that are basically all about employee benefits. I won't go through each of those lines because it's the same on each one of the articles. So if you ask a question in one, you're generally asking the question for all. But we'll take it slow, and we'll go along, and I'll ask if there's any question, and I'll go line by line.
Those are contractual anyway, aren't they?
They are. That's a great point, Leslie. They are, and they're fixed costs as what they are. What the FICR is, is what the FICR is. Yeah.
So just to make sure I understand, this is a...we're looking at three years here, right? 20 to '21, what we spent, '21 to '22, which is this current budget, and then next year's proposed?
You got it, Mary.
I was making sure we're looking at three years. Okay.
You got it. Yeah, that's exactly right, and we work left to right. So the first one is stipends paid. Overall, you can see that we had a budget of 35 last year, or the year we're living in. We're looking at a budget of $37,000, or an increase of $2,000. The overall increase of that amount is 5.71%. And that is, I would say, I think, if it's 100% on the changing in the Athletic Director's stipend. I can explain what that is, because they did this this week with the Stipend Committee. Mary and Amanda were in that meeting. There were no other stipends brought to the table, and none that had really disappeared, but the Athletic Director's position had not been looked at for at least, I think we said, 12 years.
12, you said.
So our Athletic Director is retiring from being an Athletic Director. It's a part-time position, and currently it's Tracy Scully in the middle school. So we need to go out and find another middle school Athletic Director. So that stipend was increased approximately $3,000, or in this case, it's the difference, it's the 5.71%.
$2,500.
$2,500 bucks, yeah. But anyway, we looked at the job description, we looked at it. I had to bring the committee together, and I think that the price is set at a place that should be attractive if somebody wants to be our middle school Athletic Director. So...
I'm sure paying for it.
The set price for the Athletic Director in this budget will be $6,500, just under $6,500. It was like $6,490.
$9,100.
$9,100, yeah.
The reason I asked the question is, is on the municipal plan, they're looking for, they're looking at a Rec. Director.
Okay.
And I do know that both sides is a lot of work. So I'm just wondering about the offer.
We have, we're developing a job, a job responsibility sheet, Dennis. And when that's done, that will kind of show, that'll help whoever takes the position over. It'll be a worksheet to help what you do. Maybe that job responsibility can be looked at for that. I don't know how much crossover there is, because I don't know the Rec. Director's job. Yeah, but we'll have that if you want it.
But they're talking about hiring one, so...
Yeah.
John, if we had kept it at the level, at the percent, it was going to be 4, 9, 7, 7, so it went up only 1,500.
Perfect. Okay, that's what it would have been if we didn't make the change to the 15% weight factor. Thank you. You have that sheet right there, don't you? Okay. So, yeah.
And there's a, and I know that you always have worked, at least my experience, they've always worked more hours than what they're actually budgeted for.
You bet.
You know, there's always a maximum for whatever hours. How many hours a year would that be?
I was going to ask her to...
That would have been a good Tracy question, yeah.
But what happens is, say the coach can't make it to the game, our Athletic Director has to coach that game.
No, no, I appreciate that.
And stuff like that.
But there's a minimum, I mean, you know, whether it's...
Well, when we say it's 15...
50 hours a season, no, 30 hours a season.
15% of, we're saying the 200, how many days, right?
Right.
15%.
So the stipends are based, and Kim can give us the exacts, but it's based on the base, the step zero, base pay.
Right.
So what's at the lowest, you know, the bachelor's degree at the lowest. And then when that changes, as it just did with the vote of the contract next year, that base pay changed due to the collective bargaining agreement. When that changes, that changes the stipends too, because they're based on the step zero of bachelors. And as Mary noted, even if we didn't increase the Athletic Directors, it would have been increased from the base anyway, up to about $1,500 shy of what I asked for it to be, because I need to revert somebody.
It was only a $200 difference.
That's another conversation that we have on the municipal end, is how many hours a week is this person going to be?
Yeah.
Well, they're writing a job description, because they're going to... A person who takes that on has to realize how much is involved. They have middle school meetings in...
You mean our Athletic Directors?
Yeah.
Okay.
They travel to different places, to other schools. They go to area, area of...
They have regional meetings.
They have regional meetings for all the Athletic Directors for the middle schools in those areas, and they're in touch with Athletic Directors for other schools, for like scheduling games and things like that.
So there's a lot of questions.
They have quite a bit of outside. Kim, you going to say something?
I was.
Well, no, I was just going to say that, I mean, it's really hard to say the number of hours, because it can vary from year to year. I mean, a lot depends on how many kids actually sign up for certain sports.
Sport and sport, either.
But I remember when they first started paying stipends here, that was a few years ago.
When they set up the budget, it was for X amount of hours for each sport.
Yes, what we did was, we took the hours and made percentages. That's what we did, and we clarified that, God, I don't know how long ago. But once we did that...
2015.
Okay.
There you go.
So once we did that, then if a new club came along, like the Green Club did, and we said, "Well, how many hours?", but then that was broken down into a percent, and then we knew where to put that, because we have something that, like, the Green Club right now is 1%, you know? How many hours that is? I don't know. We calculated it at one time, what that would be, but sure, we could go back and find the paperwork.
I'll offer up, I don't know who's in charge of looking at the position for the municipal side, Dennis, but you can certainly convey that any information we have, if Athletic Director's comparable, we actually can...
Yeah.
You know, Tracy might even be willing to sit down and talk to some people about what her job has been for the last 12 years. We set up, if that's helpful in any way.
Well, there's nothing wrong with listening to people that know what they're talking about.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So on, I'm looking at athletic coaches, co-curricular activities. So these are teachers that volunteer for this?
It could be parent. It could be just somebody, you know, not a high school kid person.
What is it? Well, I mean, for the majority of it.
Mostly staff.
Mostly teachers.
Mostly staff.
Okay, so that's on top of their salaries, or they're getting stipends?
Right, so if they're going to coach basketball, so if you're a math teacher, Ray, and you coach basketball, and you want to coach basketball, and you're a teacher, it's great, because you have the relationship with the kids. But if we can't find a basketball coach, my math teacher doesn't, I still have to have a basketball coach. We'll put an ad out, and then you can apply for it, and you can be the basketball coach, and then... But you're a parent and a community member, you're not a teacher. So that's how it works.
So like...
Sometimes we do have to work that.
So the stipend for basketball, boys' basketball, would be $2,799. So you would get that if you wanted to volunteer, and we couldn't find somebody.
I don't know if basketball's a game. I just threw that out there, right? Baseball and basketball.
Okay, baseball, okay. All right, baseball then, all right. All right, so how many, how many people are, or how many different clubs do you have?
You have it right there, Mary.
Yeah, so we have the Athletic Director, then we have Boys' Soccer, Girls' Soccer, Girls' Basketball, Boys' Basketball, Baseball and Softball.
A separate one.
So that's extracurricular. We call that extracurricular. Co-curricular goes into Odyssey of the Mind, Drama Coach, Legos, Student Council, Yearbook, Writing Club, Math Team, American Sign Language. We still have them.
Yeah, Michelle Raynaud is teaching that. If there's enough interest, now, if there's not enough kids interested in coming in on Tuesday to learn it, then we don't run it. But most of the time, these will always run, and during COVID, we couldn't run any of them. So now that we're back to normal, we're seeing a lot of kids enroll.
Which is why our number in the 2021 was so low.
That's why your number was so low, because you couldn't come to, couldn't come in the building.
Two days a year.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the employee benefits associated with the stipends paid are flat, they're the same as last year. Other professional services, referees, referees and contracted services, there should be a D there, are at $3,600, nothing's changed, it's flat. Equipment repairs, again, flat at $1,000. Travel and conference, proposed differences still at $850, no change. Instructional supplies, no change. Dues and fees, again, no change. Co-curricular, extracurricular, field trip transportation, so this is no change, but know that Odyssey of the Mind...
Math Team, I think.
Sometimes the Math Team, not always, and any competitive sports are the ones that we move to go to another place to play. So Acton might take on Sanford at Acton, and then next week, it's Acton takes on Sanford at Sanford. So we've got to get them down there. So that's the transportation cost.
Do you play the dues and fees for...
So dues and fees, like for...
Membership, yeah.
Like Odyssey of the Mind, so they have to have all the kids, and they all have to pay to join the membership for Odyssey of the Mind.
MPA is a big one. It's the Main Principal Association for Sports.
So the kids, or I'd say the kids' parents actually pay to be...
No, it's not a pay to play, it's the school.
The school pays for the kids to play.
Yeah, the school pays, right, right.
School pays the dues to the organization, and then the kids are allowed to participate.
Correct.
Like sometimes they, like, when they do the Legos, and they go to competition, they have to, they have to pay to actually be able to go to...
Odyssey of the Mind, you can...
Odyssey of the Mind does that.
Where did they go?
They're one of ours.
Yeah.
Did they go to Kansas one? Where did they go?
Odyssey of the Mind.
Odyssey, which one was it?
We've sent kids a lot of places.
We've sent kids a lot of places, because they've done so well in the regionals, and they've made the nationals, and then we do a lot of fundraising.
You have to, you get them there.
Do fundraising to get enough money to send them.
So to answer Ray's question, the dues and fees allows you to be in the national circuit, let's say, of Odyssey of the Mind. And then if you do well enough at the local states and the national championships, you've got to figure out how you're going to get yourself there and pay for it. But it allows you to go compete on the world stage for something like that, right? That's a pretty good example. So at the end of the day, you can add up your totals across the bottom for a percentage increase of 3.42% for Article Number 5. I'll move on now to Article Number 6, Support Staff, using the same formula, going left to right. Salaries paid to Professionals, Support Staff, and these are salaries for Social Worker, Nurse, Instructional Assistant Principal, and Librarian. And you can see the difference is $14,000, 642, or 6%.
Is it Librarian, Media Specialist?
It is, and there wasn't enough room to put the whole title in there, yeah.
It's her title.
It is.
It sure is, and I worked hard for it.
Yes, yeah.
Just give her a Librarian MS.
Yes. Librarian slash MS.
There you go.
The next one is a salary for the IT Director. And you'll see an increase of 3.99%. Salaries paid to Substitutes, covering these staffs, is flat at $1,200. Now, this stipend is different.
Substitute teachers?
Substitutes for this group. So when we break out, like, for instance, for the nurse, if I need a substitute nurse, if I needed a substitute librarian, I don't need a substitute assistant principal. If the assistant principal's sick, there's nobody to cover.
Gotcha.
Good question.
So not substitute teachers, substitute for staff?
We looked at, when we looked at teachers last week, right?
Okay.
When we looked at teachers last week, you would see a line, substitute for those teachers we talked about. Different staffer in different articles. In this case, it's the nurse, the IT Director, the library, media specialist, and the assistant principal, right? Good question. And then stipends paid, this is a different stipend, the $16,000, and it's flat. Kim can get into the weeds. I'm going to give you the 2,000-foot view on this one. In Maine, when you're a teacher, you, if you're probationary, you come out of college, or you haven't had two years of teaching experience, you're considered a probationary employee, any school in the state of Maine. By law, you have to be assigned a mentor teacher to help you understand how to be an effective professional educator in any Maine school.
In the school you're in.
In the school you're in. It's a two-year process. For instance, I hired quite a few new teachers coming out of college. Whenever I retire, I might find somebody out of college that's ready to roll, they come in. They're going to be assigned a mentor for two years. Their third year, if they, obviously, if they make continuing contract and stay, they don't need a mentor after that. I hire a teacher with three years' experience from another district, and they come in, they don't need a mentor teacher. Your first two years of public education, you need a mentor teacher. Those are paid stipend positions for mentor teachers to mentor the new teacher in their first two years. It's part of the education process. So this is a different stipend than the Stipend Committee that we just talked about.
These stipends are included in their teacher contract, correct?
They...
The bargaining contract?
They are, and it's, again, it's all set. So like, when I have a lot of new teachers, I need to find a lot of seasoned teachers to mentor these, and the matchmaking has to happen. But when you have teachers, when you have more teachers in the building that are three years or more experienced, you don't need as much of this. The reason we need a bunch of this now is I have a lot of young staff. We have a lot of young staff, so there's been some turnover.
Yeah.
There's more teachers now here under me than there were when I came in, that things have changed that much. I'd say it's very close to 50/50. I wouldn't say there's more, but we're right at about half. And the tide will continue to change, because it was an aging staff, yeah, with retirements and turnover.
So we also have someone in charge of the PBIS, so they get a stipend for taking that on.
What is the stipend per mentor?
Kim, is that on a, that's based on the same formula?
It's based on hours, so it's hours times, it's 30 hours based on the base rate, so it's about $972 for each teacher, that, each mentor.
And the hourly rate is calculated on the current contract?
It's about 32, 38.
32, 38, okay. Okay, so now we're into that employee benefits piece, where I'm, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I'm on the fifth one down. And it looks like all the way through until the second to last, the last one, are all employee benefits, benefits for regular health insurance and social security. Those would be the next six. And as you can see, we're up in 1.91%, but then down 4%. These are all fixed costs. As I did last time, I won't go over each one, because there's a block of them. But I'll pick it back up with tuition reimbursement for professionals, which is the last one on this page. And that's flat at $24,000. Tuition reimbursement is a benefit that is in a lot of companies, but in particular in education, it's to reimburse college credits for people that want to move on with their education. So if you're taking a college course, you get a certain grade, it's paid for per the collective bargaining agreement. So we know who's moving on to a master's degree, who's moving on to a bachelor's plus 15, and we have monies there to support, you know, further education. So that's what that money is for.
Do you have a lot of teachers that take advantage of that?
They should too, yeah. Okay.
Is there a limit to the amount of classes you can have?
There is. It's three a year, up to nine credits at the University of Maine rate, the UMaine rate. So if you want to go to Harvard, it's pretty expensive, you'd have to pay the difference between the Harvard rate and the UMaine rate, which would be about 20 grand out of your own pocket.
And even though Hampshire, yikes.
Right, so we'll pay the UMaine rate to any course you want to take anywhere, but you've got to pay the difference. So a lot of people, obviously, will take the University of Maine course. And if it's cheaper, then we pay for it, and you don't get the cash difference. It's just a cheaper course that you take online or something.
They take an online course.
Does it, does the more education the teacher gets, does that help to increase their pay rate according to the contract?
Yes.
Not until, not until...
There's a couple columns in the pay scale.
They have to have at least 15 years, 15 credits past bachelor's, right? And then they would move to a master's degree, and then another 15 past...
Master's plus.
Masters plus, but it, zeros, not zeros up, but it flattens out at some point. There's a max.
Yeah, it's a master's plus 15.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tuition reimbursement for Support Staff, so it's the same thing with the Support Staff, the hourly people that work here too, also have a tuition reimbursement if they want to take courses as well. The Professional Employee Training and Development, so for instance, this $3,400 line right here, which is flat, I'll give you a really good example, like I-Ready is our math program, and we're going to have some teachers that need to have training on how to deliver the I-Ready math for the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade next year. So in doing that, that's professional development that we are saying the employee needs to take. So it's not a course they're taking on their own, it's not something they're on their own, they're saying, Kim needs to take this course in HR to make sure that we're on par running HR at this, at our organization. So Kim's going to get paid to go get the training, and we're going to pay the course for her, just like a professional license for you, Ray, or whatever. We pay for the training for you to have that professional license or that certification. So that's what that is, and that's $3,400 if we're asking them to go do something for us to learn the curriculum. And then Other Professional Services was, is down $1,800, because it's for the nurse and the social worker, and when we hired the social worker, she had a certain kind of social work license, and she needed to be dialed into and connected to a person who was a higher-level certification, and that's when we hired her, so we had to support her through that. That's different than a teacher, a social worker, a teacher, different roles. She now has that piece done, she doesn't need it anymore, so we were able to back that up in the budget. That's why there's a difference. And the one that says with the nurse, that's actually that $1,000, is every school has to contract with a medical facility, so that the nurse can actually hand out prescription drugs to students with their names on it through a doctor that works for the school. Repair and Maintenance Services. Now, Mike, we're moving much closer now into Technology, so I'm going to ask you, as I hit each one, if there's any reason you want to speak, but this is one of them I mentioned you might want to talk about, because it has an increase, it's almost doubled under Repair Services for Laptops, Large Computers, Technology Items. MLTI, is that on here?
No.
Okay, it didn't make it, so you didn't make it. You made this list, didn't you? Yeah, MLTI, I'll make it easy, MLTI, Main Laptop Technology Initiative. It's the computers that the state of Maine supports for us. I'll let Mike talk about the actual $5,000 increase there.
Mike, are you the IT Director? Is that your role here?
Yeah.
The extra five grand, I think, is just an actual move of, an increase from the...
The change, right?
Sounds convincing, Mike.
That's called twin brain right there.
Yeah, I know. Honestly, I'm not sure if five grand is...
Denied.
On this, on this line particularly. I thought, I think it was related to the fact that there was, I had two repair/maintenance lines, and I think they kind of got merged together into one under here. I'm just looking up my itemized list.
I can look at last year's. Oh, I lost it.
Well, Mike, you also have another place where you're down 44% under Instructional Supplies, so I was making an assumption.
Yeah, I think that's where the two merged together.
They're different numbers. It's 3,000 to 5,000, so it's a different down than it is...
Right.
And then you're down on Equipment 33 for Hardware.
Yeah, it's, it's basically three different lines, where I have a line for small technology supplies, I have a line for repairs and maintenance, and I have a line for miscellaneous supplies, I think. And it kind of got merged into one, pulled from one place, added to another. So it's kind of a flip-flop of, you know, a grand here, three grand there, all compiled into one line. And that's why you see the increase there, and then decreases in else, in other lines.
You inherited the next one, which is Coffee or Service Agreement.
Correct. That was distributed through the regular 3, the K2, is it K2 or K3?
Article 2.
And then the 3, 6, right.
We moved, right.
Yeah, I've inherited those two lines, so those will be 100% increase.
Right, because they were always in the budget, but not under Technology. We moved them, because that's where they belong.
Correct.
Okay.
So it's added here, so it shouldn't show up somewhere else.
Right, it already didn't show up somewhere else.
They can take it out of it, too.
It already got moved out of 2, yeah.
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 $5,000.
Software repairs and maintenance, it's software maintenance programs, Mike, up 2,000, 7.9%. Your Bright Space?
That's, yeah, I did some cutting and some adding. Bright Space is...
Roughly $2,500 more. You heard earlier that, you might have heard some language around Mastery Connect and Bright Space. and Bright Space, those are our learning management systems. Our contract with the current one has expired, so we shopped around and we're going with another one called Bright Space with that other one. It's roughly, it's 2,475 increase between the two.
I've also started phasing out some software that we aren't using.
True.
Across the board, so I'm trying to phase out some stuff that's not being utilized and bringing in, right, the program Bright Space and phasing out Mastery Connect. And iExcel isn't being utilized 100% across the board, so that's going to be phased down as well, because I Ready is being used, our math program software. So it's a little, you know, take from here and give there.
Communications is flat, the cell phone, travel is flat, 2,800. Instructional supplies is down 44% or minus $3,000. I usually talk about ones that are big up or down, this is down, that's nice, but do you know why it's down for supplies for professional?
Um, that's where the technology repairs and equipment, I think they, they moved from one line to another.
Now, you have books and periodicals line here, it says books for the, for the library, so we're shifting back over to Jen.
Right, they're going in order of the account numbers?
Yeah, I know, I was just looking at that, because we go from, we go, we go over to library, then we go back to technology. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that this is still, this article includes library and media specialist, it's not just technology.
Right.
So we just shifted in that one line from instructional supplies over to books for library, and that's flat at 4,500. And we're in the library, so you can see what we mean about books. And then technology-related supplies is flat at, no, it's, it's flat at $5,000, am I reading that correct?
No, that's an increase.
That's an increase, because there's no zero there, right, I'm reading the next one.
So it should be 100% there, right?
Right, as well as the one up top that got shifted, right? That's what I commented before on the photocopy service.
The zero, um, again, was another move from, um, the repairs, maintenance line, I think. In the past, it was moved up into supplies, technology-related supplies and equipment.
Library equipment is flat at $150. Equipment, hardware technology, that's, that's equipment for technology, is down 33% or down $5,000. Dues and fees is flat at 950. Program supplies for PBIS is flat, $1,000. Overall, 4.344. Article six. Okay, we ready to move on to seven, using the same technique? We have seven, nine, and 12 to go. Plugging right along. Superintendent salary is flat, and this is coming out of the systems administration. And then the business staff salaries, there's an S there, because this is Kim's first year in retirement, not now, next year. That's why I want everybody to understand why it's the salaries. Part-time sal- part-time salary for finance personnel director, that's Kim, and full-time assistant to the finance director, that's Lisa. So by bringing Lisa in, we were able to honor Kim's retirement that she wanted to do two years ago, and we talked her out of it. And by bringing Lisa in to help her, we now can have her come out of retirement, I call that pulling a Michael Jordan, coming out of retirement to come play ball with us again at a part-time basis next year. Right?
Yep.
Right, okay. That's the first, that's the first time you've seen that in this budget, is, is her going part-time. So we'll actually have two part-time administrators for the first time next year, you and Sharon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't get any ideas, John.
I got two titles already in here, it can't be part-time. Board secretary stipend, that's the stipend to the board secretary, and the secret, the board doesn't have its own secretary per se, as in administrative assistant. Every school board needs a secretary by law, and that's Jen, who's taking the minutes at tonight's meeting.
Raise your hand, Jen.
Jen, you over there? There she is. She's at every, she's at every board meeting, and that's what she does for us, or for the board. Benefits for the superintendent, benefits are, have changed quite a bit, Kim.
This is was.
Where we had to move it?
Yeah, we had, last year, I had, one of the benefits was full, all on this one.
All in one article, not in the other.
In eight.
Right.
Didn't have it at all, so now it's just split.
So we'll see the other half of that when we meet on Tuesday. Yeah, we won't see it tonight. Business staff benefits, now, that's changed because Lisa's on board, right? She came in, and you're heading out. The group insurance is flat. The support group insurance, again, that would go back to bringing Lisa in with her insurance, has changed that.
Yeah.
Uh, I did ask you about main, the.
Mebers?
Yeah, where it says directors, we can just forget about directors, but it's in here as main, main, that's main public employee retirement system. So it looks like the only, that's the only one that's flat, and then we're back to contracted services. Contracted services is flat, and what is that contracted service in the system administration? That's, if you have a retirement plan, like a 403B or a 401K in most business places, you have to have a third-party vendor do that for you. So Kim works with a third-party vendor that places those funds into employees' accounts. Purchased professional services is down, that's generally legal and audit expenses. We really haven't had to use, you know, get on the phone and call 1-800-LEGAL very often, so every now and then it's pretty good to check, and it's good to have it in case if you end up in a lawsuit. But we've been pretty good, so we thought it would be a good idea to back off that a little bit, our history's been pretty solid with that. Board stipends for the school committee are flat at $1,400. Repairs and maintenance is down 50%. The shred services, we have a, and some of you may have this at work too, we have a shred service where it's a secure plastic box that looks like, almost like the size of a big trash can, and you put your secure shred, well, we're using about half as much as we thought we were going to use it. That's new as of a couple of years ago, so we can back off that. App to fund, our new financial software, which has saved a ton of time, is flat at 13,000. Liability insurance, again, just insurances are up, $600, just 6%, but postage is way down.
We don't mail as much as we.
We really don't. Cell phone is flat at 450. Advertising, $1,200 is flat. Travel and conferences is flat. Supplies for central office are flat at $2,500. Dues and fees are flat, 5,000, and this is the systems administration dues and fees for memberships. And bank service charges, $100, at the end of the day, at the very bottom, 3.60 is your overall.
I was going to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
It says board stipends, $1,400, that's not per each, that's divided.
Oh, yes. Yeah, no, good thing to speak up. Sure, I didn't give it any.
$1,400.
Yeah, not each, it's, yeah, per.
It's divided.
Everybody, yeah, yeah, the whole group, yeah.
Not evenly.
Not evenly, but I agree most.
Good night, Sharon.
So.
More chair gets more.
Transportation, you're going to see, and I'll just give you the spoiler alert, you're going to see transportation in special ed next week, we're still working on that a bit. So this transportation is getting, I'm going to say, most everybody to and from school. It's about getting on the yellow bus and getting to school, and it's about getting on the yellow bus and going home. And it's about using the three vans that we got with federal money if we need to use those three vans, and those are usually used for special education students that need to go to out-of-district placements. We'll get into special ed, and it's going to be, it's not going to be on its own, we're going to have revenues as well, and we're going to have a main office next week, but those are not, those are pretty easy to understand, and special ed is almost an animal of itself, and we're going to have Sharon pray with us next, next meeting we have, because there's so many laws around it. So I wanted to preempt with, this transportation is when you see the buses on the road. This is getting kids basically to and from to school. So we had a three-year contract with our current bus vendor, we don't, we don't own these buses, we contract them. And we did a one-year extension with this particular company, because we got the drivers, we got it down, we got the drop chains, we got everything we need. Some of the buses need a little more maintenance than I think he thought they were going to need for new buses, but they're the buses they bought, it is what it is. So we were able to extend that contract for one more year, and you can see, Kim put notations that it's 336 per run, five runs per day for 179 days. So overall, it's up 3.18%. That's what we agreed on for our big buses. Now, we haven't got to what the special ed transportation is going to be, but I'll have it for you on Tuesday, and obviously, if you're watching the news, price of gas and everything else, I'm sure my contracted agent who put that number in when we negotiated this prior to what happened in Russia, is looking at that now going, wow, fuel just almost doubled. Now, this is a one-year contract, starting, really, we're going to be using the buses in the summer, but not much. These buses will be rolling under this new price in September. Maybe things will be back to, quote, "normal" by then, who's to tell what the future's going to be. But we locked in at that, which probably isn't a bad thing, it's probably a good thing that we got that.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
This was before Russia.
This was before, right, that's what I was saying.
Well, you mentioned Russia, the fuel.
But this was before, that's why it's only a 3.18% increase.
She's just saying Russia doesn't impact the fuel prices for us.
Oh, okay. I won't get into that in tonight's meeting. We don't need to do that now, I'm just saying that. For us, when I go over to Boonies and put fuel in my truck, I know it's a lot more than it was three weeks ago.
Yeah.
I, we locked in on this more than three weeks ago, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
On your longest run, from the first pickup of the child to the last pickup till they get to school, what is the amount of time that a child is on the bus?
I'm going to guess that's going to be the high school run, because we have to go almost into South Sanford, and I'm going to say that's going to be a child who lives out probably on Acton Ridge Road, okay, out by the, out by the New Hampshire line, and I do that bus run for the elementary often when you don't have a bus driver. I do it, and I do that H Road run, that's because I'm most familiar with it. So I know it takes me.
Cut it out, you get on the bus and you drive?
Yeah, I just did Monday. Monday, I got to work, I got the phone call, you better get the bus going, you're going to be late, but you better drive, because I have a driver. So that bus route, I can answer, because I drive that route, so it's, it's out and back, it's going to be 35 minutes for the elementary, add 35 minutes onto however long it takes just to go, say, from this school to, to the high school, what's that, 15 minutes?
20 minutes.
So it's almost an hour.
You better not make it in 15 minutes.
I would say, I don't know, because I don't, I don't drive, I've never driven the high school run, I've never driven a bus to the new high school.
Oh, gotcha.
I've driven that route, and I do know that Acton Ridge is about as far as you're going to get out.
Yeah.
And I know that Sanford High School is as far away as you're going to go, so those are your longest distances. So I'd say the longest run rate is probably about an hour. The average run for the elementary kids here, because I know them, they run about 35 minutes to pick up the first kid to get to, to get to school, and then for some kids, they're right on Sandboard Street, you can pick them right up, and it's a three, you know, a three-minute ride at the most, depends on where they live.
But it's always been that way.
Sure, it was a good question, yeah, yeah.
It's always been that way. That's what you, that's what happens when you have a town that is spread out.
It's a big town.
To Lebanon and.
We're a long town.
Milton and Chapley and Wakefield, and it's.
That kind of answered a different question from another aspect, because people have been complaining about speeding on H Road, didn't know if it was you in the bus. You know what? They need that 15-minute.
Well, the new buses, they got us out pretty fast, right? To answer your question, yeah.
Then we have to go through Chapley to get to another part of Acton.
Yep.
Come back on, I mean, it's.
Overall, transportation, which is the chunk of our, moving our buses, is, is up 5.62%. The fleet fuel for our vans, I did ask him to bump that up just today, because we inserted that today before we gave that to you, just because that's fuel we put in our vans, that's the same fuel you put in your vehicles, it's just regular unleaded. And not knowing, let's bump it up a little bit, not knowing, knowing what we know now. Now, will things change in July? I really don't know.
Sure. Are our buses, the contracted buses, are they propane buses?
No, they're diesel.
No, they're diesel.
Diesel, yeah, they, we, they fill up at Boonies at the diesel bus.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, nutrition is, number 12 is our last one, doing, making great time here, folks.
Ooh.
And that's where the biggest increase is, you just said it, food, you'll see it. Yeah, so the support salaries here are, we have two cafeteria workers, and the percentage increase overall is up 14%. Part of that is the new contract for the two, and we hired a new kitchen worker that's getting a little bit more than our kitchen worker that had retired. Came in with more experience than the person who retired, the person retired but didn't retire after 30 years, just retired, actually moved out of state, that's what happened there, just in the last year. We do have to have substitute cooks, so there's a substitute line, and it happens, so if somebody calls out, it could be Mike, it could be me, it could be Lori, it might be Kim. If we can have one person run the kitchen, and then we jump in and we do what's called the line, Mike's going to put on a beard, and that, right, he's still wearing a beard, that always, the kid's going to kick out of that. So any of us can kind of serve food, you don't have to be specially qualified to do that. So sometimes if we can't find a sub, Tina or Jean will do this, Janine will do this, one of us will help when the kids need to be fed, and then we back off, and they clean up, and they go home. But generally, if we can get a sub, we try to get a sub, because there's a ton of prep before breakfast and a ton of cleanup after lunch. Support benefits, okay, now we're into one, two, three, just the next three are those boilerplate, medical insurance, FICA.
Fixed.
Yeah. And then the purchased professional services is, we need a nutrition director, food service director, but we're not a big enough school to hire one, really, so we contract with Sanford and Holly, who works for, Sanford works for us part-time, and takes care of all of our ordering and supplies and inventory and our hygiene, and keeps us legal, keeps all, keeps our people trained, and that's a contract we have with Sanford, and it's same as last year, it's $20,500 for her part-time as a food service director. So she's a contracted agent, no different than us contracting our speech and OT therapists that come in a couple of days a week to work with special, special needs students. So Holly's Holly helps us with that, and every school needs a food service director, especially when this year for kids, meals were free because of coming out of the COVID piece, and the, what is it, is it not, it's not FDIC, what is the food?
USDA.
USDA has, oh my gosh, there's so many pieces of paper that flowed in through the USDA for everything, from Smiley fries to hamburger, and she needs to do all of that, and it's a, it's a very paperwork-intensive job, I think we get a good bargain for what we pay. Repairs and maintenance in the kitchen, and this is something that we have on our long-range planning, is our kitchen's getting old, there isn't anything significant here that we're saying we need, you know, $10,000 for to fix, but things are starting to break. And at some point, our long-range planning committee knows this, we're probably looking at a $20,000 dishwasher in the next year or two. We're not putting it in the budget, it's not in there, the furnace is in there, that seems like enough for one year. But at some point, we're going to have to get a dishwasher in there, because it's, I don't know, Andy's not here, but it's, I don't know if you know, but when that original, if it's part of the original kitchen to the building, or, or not?
That wasn't.
Is that where the kitchen was always been in this building?
Yeah.
It could make sense, doesn't it? You don't move kitchens when you move things around, okay.
No, it wasn't a new, when they redid the school, that wasn't new.
The kitchen's, it's going to be, the kitchen's going to be the next place, and it won't be anything like putting in two furnaces, but it's going to need some, some updating, and it's not in this budget. Software maintenance agreement, and that software for the kitchen is up $100. Printing, menus and applications is flat at 600, the next two are flat, which is travel and LP gas. And then food, that's where your big hit is. Food is up $19,000 or 42%, and that's where you all see that when you go to Hannover and Shaw's. At this point, it's just a fact of life. Non-food supplies are flat. Dues and fees are up $50 for nutrition associates, associations. Overall, we're looking at 15% with the majority of that being the food.
I'm surprised on the LP gas being, that's also been going up.
Yeah, we have, that is flat.
Yeah, we don't use it.
They don't use that much in the kitchen.
The only place we use gas is in the kitchen, and then we have a 100-pound cylinder for the Bunsen burners in Science.
Science lab.
That's out back. Yeah, and that one doesn't get filled very often at all because they only use the Bunsen burners.
Where they keep the garage.
It's between $14.
Hey, is Andy, Andy got propane out in the white building?
He does, does.
He does have propane in the garage. So our biggest expenses, the heat that's out in the garage, that's propane.
Because he's running it in the cold season, and that's where he is. And equipment's in there, and things can't freeze.
That was in Article 2, I believe, was.
We already looked at it, though. You're right, you're right. Yeah, we've already looked at maintenance.
And we did bump that.
Okay. So those are our articles for this evening.
I'd like to back up a minute if we could. And I'm probably wrong in what I'm saying, but I'm going to say it anyway. When we were doing the support staff and stuff, there was, I think, a 12% increase in the salary lines. Am I saying, remembering that right? And with the negotiated new contract, wouldn't that go down?
This is where you cut off the six steps, right? Kim, I'm just looking at you. That's where--
Wait, no, no. He's talking about the social worker, the nurse, the instructional coach.
It went--
It went up.
No, I meant last time we met, and with the teachers and the support staff, there was like a 12% increase.
Oh, oh, that was Article 2. And at the time, we didn't know. The biggest reason why there's an increase is because we had two more teachers than what we did last year. So it's not like they all--
A pay increase.
It was, I also had two more teachers.
Yeah, all right.
I just wanted a 19, right? I just wanted to be trying to clear the last meeting we were at. Okay. I understand. I thought you meant tonight. No.
No, and I think you said--
Right here, I see it.
Being a placeholder.
It was a placeholder because at the time, when that was presented, we didn't have the final contract.
Oh, the contract we're negotiating.
So will that number change now?
The other thing is, you're looking at, you know, you're looking at these budgets, 3.42% up, you know, last one was 15, and nutrition, which wasn't a big article, but it's up. What we haven't done yet, and what we will do our last night, these are our expenses. We'll look at our revenues on our last night meeting. So you can't really go from looking at this and saying this is what the overall budget will be. We're going to put this up against our revenue. So if our revenue increases and our expenses are up, then at the end of the day, you look at what is your percent, flat, up, or down? That's just the math.
The trouble is with percentages, they can be very misleading.
Well, yeah, 50% of a dollar is 50 cents. 50% of 5 million is a lot bigger number.
That's what I'm saying. Percentage is very misleading.
No, I understand what you're saying.
So you have to give us a new Article 2 then?
Well, when you--
The most updated data.
Yeah, when we--
We do that last night.
Yeah. If it'll be the last night, you'll get everything all, you know. We're putting the book together now, and we're getting everything pretty much over ready to go. But you guys will get basically fully updated sheets.
So our goal for Tuesday is to make sure that the special ed piece is fixed with transportation. So I'm working with our contractor now, trying to get to a number that works for us. And, you know, this transportation contract early on was a little bit higher before the current spike in gas fuel, diesel fuel. We were able to bring that down then. It was a matter of just kind of talk, you know, that one-year extension, he's out of contract, he can pick a price. Well, he really can't pick a price. So we made it work so that we got it to a price that wasn't a phenomenal increase in year four, which is a one-year extension of a three-year contract. Next year, we'll go out to bid. I don't know if it'll be the same bus company or not. But next January-ish will be, well, probably even before that, probably November, we'll put out an RFP to see which bus companies want to pick up this contract for three years. That would be the next three years. These guys might bid, they might not. I don't know. You never know.
We're looking at, looking at the fuel prices on the town level also.
Sure, I'm sure you are.
Because the road commissioners have a thing in there that they get $500 more for every 25 cents of school. So they have that clause, which to me worked out very good for them.
Are you looking at town budgets right now, or is it too early for that? So you've got the school going on, plus you've got some other departments you're currently working on?
Monday night, we meet with the road commissioners and the library.
I did, I did watch a warrant and finance. I can, I just forgot about this.
Did I say anything bad about you?
No, but there was-- Not you, no. You would never say anything bad about me. Not you, Dennis. All right. There was a question Ray had that I picked up on, and he asked, you asked, how could we get into a 20-year contract with solar panels that are only good for 12 years? So I asked the guy that came and did the presentation to us about that, which I thought was a great question. His name's Michael, and he wrote, "Solar panels have a 25-year, solar panels have a warranty of 25 years. The lifespan is greater than 40 years. See attached report." So I got his email, and I got the attached report because I heard you ask that question, and I thought you probably deserve an answer, so.
Does that mean the 12-year warranty is like labor only?
Well, here, you can hand that, you can hand that to Ray.
Typically, it's the actual output of the panel. They kind of guarantee it to a certain level over so many years, like 80%.
But they're up to 25 to 30 years. We just were talking about that. And if you're talking about solar panels that were put up in the beginning of the solar panel lifespan 25 years ago, and they were, some went up in the late 1990s, those are probably dead.
Yeah.
The difference is-- Very different constructed.
Everything's different. And the thing about these is some solar companies don't even want you to be the owners of these panels because--
That's us.
Yeah, because they want them back. They can recycle and make money again. You know, the glass has a value, the aluminum, copper in them. And every year, the technology, they become less and less hazard waste. But, you know, they're down to about 90% recycling on some of them.
And that wasn't the case when Joyce and I were, and Dennis too, was on the planning board.
Yeah.
When the raid was being permitted over on H Road.
On H Road, yeah.
And the, you know, I didn't ask the question of how do you, how do you get rid of the toxic material? And their response at that point was, we're hoping that someone will devise a good technology to dispose of these materials. I mean, you're seeing, that was the answer. And they were looking at a 25-year life cycle for the panels. But you're seeing now that the technology is evolving, and while we still don't have a good way to dispose of some of these things, we're slowly getting there.
We will by the time they're dead.
The next group will have to worry about that, right? The next generation.
It's actually gone faster than one would think.
Getting back to the budget. After the last, after the last meeting--
Yep.
--that we met with you guys, Ray came up with a list of questions.
Yep.
And I come up with a list of questions.
You sent them to me.
I sent them to you. I sent you Ray's, yeah. And I would just like to thank you and Andy for your responses. Everything was, to me, very, explained very well, don't you, right?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. We, I talked to Kim, and I asked her, do we, we probably need to put a little more in the description. And then I love the fact that Jeanette asked for the cheat sheet on what some of these acronyms mean, because nobody knows. So we're trying to make, we use them all the time, and sometimes we forget.
And I was asked that at a warrant finance meeting.
What does this mean?
What some of these things mean. And it's like, I don't know.
So we will meet Tuesday night. It's an off one. We need to meet Tuesday night at 5:00 right here. There is no school committee meeting. It's just this, it's just a budget meeting. We'll finish the budget Tuesday night, hopefully.
At 5:00 or 6:00?
5:00. We'll know what we have for our school budget with revenues and expenses. Then what we would do on Thursday night, a week from tonight, is we'll have a school committee meeting, because they're taking votes, so it needs to be a school committee meeting on the budget. It won't be any other items. We won't have--
Are we here for the Tuesday meeting?
Yes, Tuesday and Thursday. That's why I mentioned it. Tuesday and Thursday next week.
I had the Thursday one to have the Tuesday one.
Tuesday and Thursday. We'll have it wrapped up where if this all works out, we'll have a meeting very similar to this on Tuesday. And then on Thursday, it'll, it'll probably be a school board meeting that might be sitting like this. I don't know how you want to do the design, but public might come, they might not. There won't be any agenda information like around grading or anything like that. It'll be only on the budget, and the school committee will vote on the budget as presented over these nights that we've met. Once that's done on Thursday night, the school committee will turn it over to you for your review and your review recommendations. Once that's done, that allows me to take the vote and the recommendations to the selectmen, to stay on our timeline. So Tuesday, Thursday, if we work hard, we should be able to get Thursday night with the budget.
So Thursday, we'll be voting on actual articles. We'll have the actual articles of the budget to vote on.
It'll be very similar to last year where, where it's, because it's a ballot.
It's a ballot.
So it's very different. So you'll have the total budget, less with the EPS number. You have to separate that out. So there's one article. And then the next article will be the budget broken down by Article 2, 3, 4, and then with the total. And then there's two grant articles, you know, that we can receive grant monies in through our account. And then the next one is we can expend our grant money through our account. So that way, we're not creating all these accounts just for grants.
And the intent is, my understanding is, when we get this done, John will send that up to the town hall.
Yep.
And the following Wednesday, if all goes well with the selectmen, they'll be voting on the warrant, and then it gets posted. That's intent.
And then we have a forum for the public in the gym to talk and ask questions about the school budget that was created. Of course, anybody could come in during any of these because they're all posted. But that's when people that want to ask questions about what's in here, we can do that in the gym.
And that would be our public hearing.
That would be the public hearing. Last year, we did it by Zoom, remember? This year, we'll do it in person. Yeah. Okay.
And it's, you know, it is important to remember that you just reminded me of that, that the warrant looks much different because if you're going into the booth, you're not going 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 down through the whole thing and trying to read, well, this is what the state says we have to do for EPS, and this is, you know, what all the differences are. By having on a written ballot, it's constructed differently. So it's just listing the articles and the amounts of each article is accurate.
It's there.
It's all there.
The information is there, but it's really like, really one question about this is the school, the 5 million whatever budget for the school is the one question. And then the information is on the other side, what each article--
And then we'll have the budget books available.
We're going to hustle on that. We're going to get that done right away. We'll start writing our letters because we need to get those out for people. Yeah, for people to have when they do the forum, so they can look and say, what's this?
In these warrant articles, when we're voting on them, I don't remember when it was secret about Kim, but in the past, when it was an open town meeting, the articles were all written to see what sum the town will--
This is going to be a yes, no.
Like last year.
Okay, so it's going to see sums, it's either up or down.
Yep, because it's a ballot versus a town meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
And in between time, there's going to be enough information out there for those that are interested that want to go to vote. They'll be able to study. There's booklets passed out around town. And here, the welcome meetings and, you know, I mean--
And it'll be, and they'll be online, too. And we'll get some other stuff, too.
Last year, there was a sand back, it was salt or sand that was attached to the school budget. It wasn't attached. It was just, it was voting on a Tuesday, and there was a salt referendum at the same time. I think last year, what, we have over 400 people show up to vote on the school budget? Yeah. It'd be nice to have as much turnout.
Is it going to be, are there going to be any other articles?
Jennifer has not mentioned to me that any other referendums are going to be part of it. It will be just the school as usual.
We have been given budget proposals from the departments, but we haven't received the information, what the selectmen are planning on putting forward yet.
So you've got information from the departments?
Yeah.
But you have to wait and see what the selectmen put forward on their warrants to approve and look at?
The reason why I wanted this information the way we did it was so that, I mean, they want us to be all done, I'm going to say the third week in April. So you've got to meet with all these different departments and have conversations. So I asked them for the proposals so that we could stop meeting with the departments so that they could ask questions on where the departments are coming from. You know what I mean? And I don't want to say what the selectmen decide to do is irrelevant, but decisions we make lots of times would be on what the departments might--
Are requesting, yeah.
Are requesting, you know what I mean? I mean, this, they're talking 7% raises up there for everybody. The Ricky Smith fire chief has asked for a $5 pay increase across the board. The road commissioners asked for a $10 an hour increase across the board. A $5 an hour increase on their equipment. So there's a lot of conversations we have to have.
I got a question. When our fire department, the rescue, goes to rescue other towns, we get reimbursed by that town, right? By insurance, whatever call they've gone on?
How that works, because that's an interesting thing that just came out. We are now, if we go to Shapley on a rescue call, nobody in Shapley responds.
Right.
The town of Shapley gets a bill for $2,000. If we go and just because we need for mutual aid, then that's completely different.
But we get reimbursed?
We get reimbursed for our, for the insurance company for--
Right.
For our service. But what is happening, and they did the same thing 11 and a couple of years ago, there weren't, nobody responding. And that's been the problem in Shapley. So the chief's position was, Acton spends a lot of money having the best fire department around, and these other towns are supposed to be mutual aid, and they need to step up and do the same thing. So the city of Sanford and the town of Acton have both sent letters to Shapley saying, if we respond, and nobody from your town does, you have to pay a bill of $2,000. And if you don't pay it, we won't be responding anymore.
But suppose one or two show up, but not a whole crew?
I got no idea.
I mean, we've got to build them somehow.
That's way above my pay grade.
We are taking care of everybody. Newfield--